Many members of the staff whose creativity and hard work kept us going through the last 20 years. And most importantly, thank you to our viewers, because it's you who make Channel 6 what it is, the exceptional channel. I'm Jim Heffernan. Thank you for watching us, and please, keep watching Channel 6. Good night.
Okay, today is Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. I call this village board meeting order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Bush?
Here.
Trustee Frankie?
Here.
Trustee Jerus?
Here.
Trustee Larkin?
Here.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
All board members are present tonight, and tonight we have the invocation from Pastor Jonah of the Prince of Peace Church and the Pledge of Allegiance. Whoever, please rise. Pastor? You're called. You want to do the pledge first, or you want to go first?
I'll go ahead and pray. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you please pray with me? Dear God, we thank you for this time and this space where we get together with members of our community. We pray that you would be with us tonight and that you would remind us that we represent a lot of people in this space, and so please keep them in our hearts and in our minds tonight as we step into this meeting. Please help us do what needs to be done, and in all things, remember who you are and who you call us to be. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. The flag's to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Hang on a second, Pastor.
Of course.
Well, thank you, thank you. Holiday season coming up. Now, are you going to be there on Monday for the inner faith council?
I will be, yes.
We'll see you there that night. Looking forward to it. What we're talking about is Monday before Thanksgiving, they started last year, and they're going to do it again this year, is we have a gathering of all the different faiths. They come together at the church. It's going to be Christians Victor this year on Ardentite Road, and we all just talk about the joyous season coming upon us from Thanksgiving to the holidays, and it's really unique, because you get all faiths. We have Buddhists, we have Muslims, we have Baptists, we have Catholics, we have Methodists, you name it, and it's really neat, and it went well last year, so looking forward to it. So I'm going to give you plenty of chug, just get that sugar going.
Great.
So I know you give the best sermon of all.
Thank you, thank you.
There you go. Thanks a lot.
How's it going, Mr.?
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, move on now to the approval of the minutes of October 28th, 2025.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of October 28th, 2025, and dispense with the reading.
Motion, Mr. Trustee Frankie, second?
Second.
Oh, it's a battle.
It's a battle.
I say they wrestle for it. What do you think, Mike? Do we have a good... Yeah, we could make... Oh, not arm wrestling. Not arm wrestling. Just like we did Friday night at the VFW. We weren't the real wrestling. So I'll give it ladies first, Trustee Miller, and all those in favor sitting in front by saying aye.
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 Let the record show you now its approval. Move on now to Mayor and Board of Trustees' report tonight. I'm going to start off with a little personal note for the community, and I know a lot of people say, you know, some things are private. Unfortunately, in our world, being a mayor or elected official, you don't really have a private life sometimes. It's public. But I also do it to hopefully send a message out. If you remember, what, 15 years ago, I was killed in a bike crash, bicycle race, sprinting crash, and thank God for Dr. J. He saved my life. One of my lungs got punctured by a broken, I had six broken ribs. He stretched me out, so I started breathing again good. Then a few years after that, I had bypass surgery, heart bypass. I've talked about that many times in the public before. My hope then was to tell people, hey, if you have any issues, get that stress test. Saved my life, it could save your life, and all that. Well, tonight, I'm going to mention, I just recently found out I have prostate cancer. So great doctors, my personal doctor's Dr. Barry Glick, my urologist surgeon is Dr. Pearl, works out of Lexian Brothers, Luther and Joe and all that. Again, guys, please, please, I started when I was 45, get your PSA test. Get your PSA test. They watched mine for 20 years. It was about a year and a half ago, they saw it starting to blip up a little bit, kept blipping up a little bit, and so recently, it blipped up and they said, hey, we need to take some tests. They did an MRI on me, thank God for medicine, knocked me out for it, and then they did biopsy recently, and they found I have a Gleason score seven, which is on the lower end. Prostate cancer's a very slow-growing cancer, but it can kill you too. So you got to make sure you watch it and stuff. Right now, they feel confined to the prostate. My plans for now, I got one more test to go through. Right now, I'm going to have it removed. My view is, if you have cancer in your body, if you remove it, you remove it. I'm going to remove it. And so that'll be coming up soon. But again, you know, we all know how Facebook works in this world. If I don't show up for a meeting or two, they'll be writing, oh, the mayor must have broke the law, must be running away from someone, he's hiding, something's bad. So I tell you right up front the truth. I always have, I always will. So, I mean, it's not something anybody wants to go through, but it's very common with men as we get older, and it's something you need to address and take care of. So if I can do anything with my announcement tonight is, men, get checked, get checked, get checked. Like getting a colonoscopy. You can avoid colon cancer if you got your colonoscopy when you're supposed to. You can avoid prostate cancer hurting you bad if you check it and you catch it early. You catch it early, you take care of it. I plan on taking care of it. I've got four kids, 10 grandkids, with more grandkids coming. I want to see them grow up. I want to see them have fun. So I'm taking care of it. Again, I've always been upfront with you folks, honest with you, and I'm doing it again tonight. So we're going to get it done, and, you know, the thing I found ironic is how many people, when I've told them prostate cancer, oh my God, I'm so sorry. It's not a death warrant. You can fight it, you can beat it. I plan on beating it. So we can get it done. So again, if I get anything out of tonight's meeting, men, get checked and listen to your doctors. That's what they're there for. I think I got two of the best in Dr. Glick, Dr. Pearl, and my faith in them, my work's going to be done at all Lexian Brothers, right here in Old Hospital in our town, and I'm grateful we have a hospital that close to us. So with that said, now we'll go back to more positive, positive stuff. Since the last meeting, Halloween, October 31st, yes, 65th year of trick-or-treating. It was not bad this year either. Got a good haul. Luckily, at Jeff's house, Mary was there, so she was very generous with the candy, so I appreciate that.
I told her to dump it all in there, so you get all that sugar in you.
Yeah, yeah. Jeff normally takes it out of my bucket. Mary at least puts it in there, so that's good. Also, on November 1st, next day, we had coffee with the board. Actually, it was a very large crowd.
It was.
But we were done with the questions by 10:00. That was like a record fast. How fast it got done? 10 after 10. We talked about other stuff, but it was, it was good, but that was a big crowd that day. So that went very well. Enjoyed having that. Also, November 11th, several of us were at Veterans Day, and I appreciate the veterans hosting it as they've done in the past. It went very well. November 12th, we had a TIF meeting for our Tax, Increment, Finance Districts. We met with the school districts, and this year we're rebating. We're about the only town in the world, we give money back early out of our TIF districts. So we're giving back $3 million this year to our schools, park district, and library, and we're excited because our TIF's doing well, we're doing well. We believe very strongly in giving that back quickly if we can. Also, I want to remind people, a week from Friday, the 28th, we have our annual tree lighting ceremony out here in the Village Green, and looking forward to that. We got the box tops playing. Remember, from 4:00 to 5:30, no, 4:00 to 5:00, there'll be storytime down in Room E here at the Village Hall. Young ones come, enjoy. Trustee's going to be reading different Christmas books to the young kids, and I think the Rotary Club gave books to donate out. So, yeah, Scott's got some right there, so we got books for the young kids. Come on by, we have fireworks, Santa's coming, and we're going to unveil our new race car. The new makers won a car for celebrating our 70th anniversary. That's going to be leading Santa in for our tree lighting ceremony. I mentioned earlier with Pastor about the prayer service on Monday. Couple more quick things here. Our Christmas tree, if you're out there, came today. Got it put up. Everything went good, Brian? No problems?
No.
No, no hitting power lines or anything? We came out good. So that came over from Grange. So had a crossover, not too bad. Had a cross over Ardentite Road. So very good. Looking forward to that. That's a big one, too. That's one of our big ones, I think. 35 feet, and it's nice and full around. We actually have a picture of the owner planting the tree about 40 years ago. Actually, he had a mullet. He had a mullet. So it was good. That, we'll be getting that picture out. It's very good. Also, update real quick. You see the hockey rinks going along well over there by Home Depot. They're doing a great job getting that built, getting that put up, and the view, the new shop in Ardentite Road in Higgins. Just so everyone knows, they're hoping to get done, but places like Tensuki and Jerish Bakery, they don't want to move after the holidays, and I don't blame them. Holidays are a very busy time of year for them. People getting cakes, getting sushi and other stuff from Tensuki during the holidays, so they'll be getting moved over there, I think, right after the holidays. They'll be getting set up over there, so that's moving along very well. Last but not least, tonight, we'll be passing our tax levy, our property tax levy. That'll be what's collected next September, actually, August. This year, we just got the bill now, so it's coming late, but next August, and so that's being done. Our tax change this year will be, we're going to be raising our overall private tax 2.8% or about $20 per home. Now, again, it's not our general fund. There's three parts to a property tax levy. One is general fund. That's what we pay our day-to-day costs with, our, you know, paying police, fire, all that. Then there's debt service. Our debt service is shrinking, as our finance director, Ms. Trump, will tell you, we're paying off our debt early. Our goal is try to get out in about eight to 10 years, would you say, Christine? Yep. For eight to 10 years, we hope to be out of debt. So we're working hard. While we're doing well, we're taking that money to pay off debt early. That's what good government does. You get rid of debt, you keep the thing down. The main increase is, the other portion is pensions. Pensions have been going up dramatically, and our guys, ladies deserve their pensions. They're earning it, they're working on that. But people need to understand, that's one of the driving forces on costs, and if anyone's been around, watched me for 30 years, I've been mayor, I've talked about, one thing's got to be addressed, one these days is pension. I've always said, for 20-some years, I have presentations here, everyone working for this village, got hired, get in a pension, they will all get their pension. No one's going to change it, deny it. I've always said, for new hirees, maybe starting January 1st, they do it all the private sector does, which is 401Ks. Pensions will be unsustainable eventually, if they're not already getting there. Example here, in 2000, our property tax levy was 8,000, 8,300,000. Of that, 6,800,000, or 82% of the property taxes, went to our general and debt service. Pensions were 18% or 1.4 million. In 2025, the amount going to debt service and general fund is 9.8 million, so that grew by 3 million over 25 years. Our pensions went from 1.4 million to 11.5 million. So now, general fund, debt service is 46%, pensions are 54%. So pensions grew from 18% of your private tax bill to 54. General fund went from 82 down to 46. Again, it's going to eventually be unsustainable. Something's got to be done. Again, anyone that's working for the village now, please, fire, public works, administration. We promised them a pension when they got hired. They're guaranteed that pension. I would stand behind that 1,000%. But we got to start thinking long-term. Got to think of the future, and not just Elk Grove. Everyone's wrestling with that right now. So again, I've done my soapbox before, someday something's got to be addressed. You know, we're fortunate, the village does very well, but again, so this year, our private tax levy, last year, we actually cut taxes 2%. This year, we're going to be raising them 2.8%, about $20 a household. You're entitled to all the truth upfront. We're telling you right away. It'll be on agenda tonight, right, Christine? So we passing it. So we'd like to do zero again this year. It's just, we have to meet the requirement. We have never missed a pension payment. Actually, we put in money in advance. We put almost $1 million extra a year in from our electric, our com ed fund, because our data centers produce taxes on com ed use. We're putting more of that money in to help keep our pensions covered. So we're working on that. So with that said, we got some presentations tonight, so let's see. We've got for the Halloween contest, Lions Club, I believe, right? You want to come on down? Okay. Do I introduce, talk about what the Lions Club's done?
Good evening. My name is Katie Dolan-Bomber. I'm the president of the Elk Grove Village Lions Club, and today I brought with me some lions. My husband, Mike Bommer, who's been a lion for over 45 years in this village and supporting it, even though we live in Streamwood. Russ and Carla Stahl. Russ has been a lion for 44 years, and he is also an Elk Grove lion and lived in this village all that time, and we appreciate him and his service that he provides to our community. All of the money that the lions raise through any fundraiser that we raise from the public, we give right back to the public, be it for glasses, hearing aids, needs that somebody's house burned down, some, somebody that needs help. And that's what we do, and that's what we've done all this time. This was a very exceptional couple of weeks when we did the house decorating contest. It's something our club really loves to do, and I got to tell you, Elk Grove, you are amazing, because you scare the bejesus out of people. It is scary out there. In fact, last year, when I was at one person's house, there was a tree in the yard, and the, the house was decorated very scarily, and suddenly I saw something out of the sight of my vision like this. It was a raccoon scuttling up the tree, but man, it fit that house perfectly for that, that Halloween decoration. But we are here to acknowledge several people, and don't forget, Christmas is coming up, and Christmas decorations, we're going to do the same thing. It's something our whole club loves to do. We have the Leos Club, which is the young lions in training, and they also helped us judge this year, so we're very happy to have our whole team participate.
So if you want to go ahead and announce the first overall winner.
Outstanding, outstanding. Overall Halloween theme is 629 Vine.
The Melford family. Are they here? Come on down. Come on down. Come on, come on, come on. Who's going to get the award?
The kids.
Kids, come on, come here.
They did all the work, right?
Yeah, I got you covered. Come here, sweetheart. There you go. Step up there. There you go, see? When I get tall, you by standing there, so I don't look so short. So there you go. Here's the award. Okay, now, question is, who did most of the work?
Mom.
Mom, dad.
Who came up, who came up with the ideas for it?
All of them.
Yeah, it was a group. It was a group effort. We build every year different things, so kind of everyone does their own thing.
So what, what's the inspiration behind this theme or state?
Well, we started when I was just a baby, and we've grown from there since. We, we've started building our own animatronics recently. That's been really fun.
So you'd make all that yourself?
The moving stuff, yeah.
Now, is that your profession?
No, no, we just...
I'm a teacher, he's a lawyer, so like...
We're members of the travel home club, and they offer a lot of advice and programs to help build stuff, so.
You just got, got...
Yeah, just sign up with them and just go there and have instructions and just kind of build it from there.
But it's fun, because if you build your own, then you get to theme it. So every year, we change like the outfits and things like that.
That is great.
Which is fun, yeah.
Now, how long does it take you to set all that up?
We start like September 1st, and we're usually ready to go by October 1st. It's a lot of little tinkering and things breaking and, you know, lots of work.
Every day, there's something new that's broken.
Yep.
Oh, my God. So now, my big question's always this. How do you cut your grass?
We don't.
So like, don't come ticket odds from September 1st to the end of October. You just got to let us go.
Well, we'll make sure the inspectors don't come by. Well, we congratulate you and did a good job. Hang on. We also make sure we can take care of you all, give you, the young ones here, this is for you, sweetheart. There you go.
Oh, my gosh.
No, 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 wait, no, they get something. Don't worry. There you go, buddy.
Thank you.
Give you that. And we'll give one to your mom and one to your dad.
Thank you.
There you go. Good. So hang on a second. We'll step up here and get a picture with emo, so come around.
Great. Thank you.
No problem. You're right here, right here in front of the thing. Try to get on here. Nice job.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
It was really a pleasure to judge you.
We had so much fun, so we always let people talk to us.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one group, you have a, you do one of a condo apartment building. They could not make it, so we'll make sure we get it to them. So that would have been the...
Carla...
Gatika?
Gatika.
Family, 430 Perry Drive, Apartment 102. We'll make sure they get through.
Apartment 302. And, and you know what? This year, we couldn't find it really last year. We finally did find it, but this year, they really did an outstanding job, so kudos to them.
Okay, our next winner is... Go ahead.
Outstanding, scariest display.
And that's the Gura family from 91 Shelley Court. Are they here?
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks pretty scary.
That was scary.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Way to go, buddy. Good job. Congratulations. Good job. What's that say? Elk Grove feeder basketball. What's basketball? We don't, that's, is that a winter sport? There's only wrestling in the winter, so it can't be a winter sport. I'm teasing you. Come on, step on up, buddy. And you are?
Charles.
Charles. Are you the one who helped design all that? No? Did you at least help?
Yeah, I put it up.
You put it up? By yourself?
No.
Oh, okay. So who came up with all the ideas on that one?
My mom.
Your mom? And she's not here tonight?
No, mom's sick.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, say hi to your mom. Look, see that camera up there?
She's watching.
Okay. Make sure you say hi to her. Tell her you're doing a good job. Now, you realize, you see that camera up there?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know how many people are watching you right now? Do you know how many? Not thousands, not hundreds of thousands. It's millions of people watching you right now. See that camera right there looking right now, right at you? More people watch you than watch the President of the United States. They're all watching you tonight. Right now, Trump might be watching you, so you never know. So, good job. So you're, she designed it, you have to build it?
Yeah, everybody kind of lays it out. We've, we're on like, what, 10 years of doing it now? It just keeps getting bigger. I think six years ago, we went to the haunted trail because people kept tripping over stuff and they'd go into our yard. But yeah, because we live in like a weird corner of the cul-de-sac, if you don't walk into it, you'll never see how big it really is. It's a full lap.
Okay.
It's been like that for four or five years now. Every year, we change it a little bit. Things get destroyed. Every year, we change it a little bit. Things get destroyed. New things need to be bought or built. I built a good chunk of it, but my wife built some of it. We just, different ideas. You know, whatever we find on like work like that, we're part of Chicago Haunt Builders, so. Whatever you can find an idea for. For us this year, I had the good luck of working in a bunch of professional haunted houses for what I do. So I got some more ideas from that, so.
Now, my question is for everyone. Where do you store the stuff when it's not Halloween season?
My whole shed and then under our deck in big tubs.
Oh my gosh.
And just break down as much as you can.
Now, do you decorate for Christmas too?
I go very minimal on Christmas, just because it's...
So your main focus is the Halloween town here? Okay. We did a great job, so I wanna make sure, first off, should I give one to your dad? Nope? I will. I'm a, there you go. For you and your mom, hold that plaque.
And his sister.
Hold it like that. And remember, mom who's watching. I'm giving quite a few to your son. Actually, this is easier. Hang on, say, hang on, buddy.
He's got that big pocket.
We'll put it right in there.
There you go.
That's why I gotta give you that sweatshirt. Hang on. We got plenty. That's all for your mom. And then you get one. Okay? Good job. Let's go down and get a picture. Good job. Give him a hand again. Take one last look. Thanks again. Give him one more hand. Okay. Last but not least, it's actually a unique one in a way. Go ahead.
Yes, outstanding child-friendly display.
And that would be, bear with me. The Shuldgen family? Did I say it right? Shuldgen? Okay, come on down. And he brought a child. How'd you guys do the children? How'd you come up with that idea? A children's idea. Where'd you come up with that?
I don't know.
Come on down. Here you go. Present, there you go. Come here, buddy, right here. Dad's waiting for you. Ah, that a boy.
Can I present it to you?
Yes. So, children's theme.
Yeah.
What was your thought process behind decorating? Like, we had the scariest and the others. What made you think children's idea, which is a great idea, the, being in that category? What was the thought behind that?
We were thinking of more like scary, but also not too scary. So if you notice, we got the Frankenstein in the front. It says, "Take your selfie hair."
That was good. It's a big giant. It's a big giant Frankenstein head right in the front.
And it says, "Take selfie hair." So I mean, we kinda made it like friendly for kids, but not too scary, that they wouldn't like run away from the houses, like the scary ones. But it's just something that they can look at and enjoy.
Well, you did a great job. Did you help your dad? Did you enjoy doing that?
Yeah.
Did you go trick-or-treating? What'd you decorate? What'd you dress up as?
A ninja.
A ninja? Oh, that's good. Well, did you have fun? Did you get a lot of candy? Yeah? Did you get more than the mayor got? You did? Good job. Good job. So, remember, you can trick, you can trick-or-treat your whole life. As long as you put on a costume, you gotta go for it. So don't be shy about it. Keep doing it. So, take you a long time again too to get everything going?
Not really. Uh, I would say we started with part of it. And then a few days later, did a few more, then a few more, then probably about a week and a half.
So now, you try to think next year, you're gonna do something different, or?
We try to do something very different, like the hearse with the skeletons in it. That was new this year.
Okay.
So we try to like get something new every year that will kinda stand out.
Okay. So you look for a feature that catch your attention?
Something that'll be a little different.
Okay, well, good. Do you a lot of work, or?
Uh, yeah.
She supported us.
Ah, that's good. Well, as long as you have fun. Did you have fun doing it? Yeah? Now, you helped him take it down afterwards?
Yeah.
That a boy, that's the key. Well, with that, should I give your mom and dad each a one? Yeah, we give them one there. How about you? You deserve a few, don't you? You did a good job. Yeah? There. Let's do this. Hang on to that. Hang on. Hang on, not done yet. Okay, there you go. So carry that carefully. Here, why don't you hop off the steps? Then we'll go around and get a picture. Should I have your mom and dad help carry some of the chocolates? Yeah?
Okay.
There you go. Here, mom, you wanna? I'll make sure they give it to you, though, right?
Yeah, don't worry, we'll give it to you.
So you hold the plaque. We'll go around and get a picture of that, okay? One more thing, Mary? Yes. Thank you, Mary. You said, yeah, calling cancer, been cancer-free eleven years, so said, "Don't worry, Mary, you can beat this."
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
So anything else for the Lions Club? Or you got, when's the holiday decorating contest?
That is the thirteenth. I think we're gonna start doing that, December thirteenth. And that runs for a week, but we are going to be serving hot chocolate and hot apple cider during the tree lighting. So watch for us there. And that's it for the moment.
Well, how many you got back there?
Four.
Four? Hang on, I got plenty. So you, the Lions Club does a phenomenal job. We thank you for all you do for the village. And I know a lot of people enjoy the contest, so thanks again. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to ask Nick Nicola. Come on up. Mr. Fix-It, Nick Nicola. Need a handyman, Elk Grove? Everyone knows you. Call Nick, Mr. Fix-It. So Nick, I did that, not you, so you won't get in trouble. I can say it. So... A lot of people don't realize, but Nick, how many years ago was it? Thirty?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one years ago. Nick came up with the idea of cleaning up Salt Creek. Now, when you go by Salt Creek now, especially go over the new bridge right there between Claremont, connecting Claremont, it looks pretty nice, the creek. It was not that way thirty-one years ago. And it's only nice now because Nick has worked every year for thirty-one years to make sure. Does a drive every year, and they go out there and they clean up the creek. And we've partnered with by picking up the stuff he finds and all that. We help get rid of it and all that. But Nick has done such a phenomenal job at staying persistent with it, taking care of it every year, that not only is Elk Grove excited and thankful for what he did, but also the governor of the state of Illinois. So, yes. So this year, Nick's efforts was recognized by the governor of Illinois, the state of Illinois. And not only that, was each year, they pick the top three governor hometown award winners and then compete for the governor's cup. So Nick's project was one of the top three in the entire state to recognize. And I know we didn't get the championship, but that's fine. We're still one of the top three in the state. So that's why the trophy, or the plaque says, "Governor's Hometown Award Finalist, the twenty-twenty-five Governor's Cup Finalist, Salt Creek Cleanup Project." So again, all the governor awards given out, they give out a few. There's only three of the top three, and Nick was one of the top three. Actually, went down to Springfield for the, uh, one picked. Caroline went, and unfortunately, he didn't get one, but he's still one of the top three. So Nick, on behalf of the village, well, not only have this award for you, but we're also gonna post the award by the bridge on your side before you go across the bridge across Salt Creek. So, Nick backs up to Salt Creek. It's right on Essex and Claremont. And we got the brand-new bridge we just put in over a year ago. And this will be posted on his side as you go over the bridge, right before you go over the bridge. The sign will be posted right there. So you, every day, you get up, you come home, go back to work, you will see the difference you made for us.
That's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody for everybody's cooperation over all the years. All the volunteers, the village, the park district, all the entities and people that helped this all come together and, and remove all that trash and garbage. And actually, it's been thirty-five years I've been cleaning the creek. Because of my family, when they were little kids, we'd take canoe rides and they would help clean up. And then it got to the point where like we were cleaning and cleaning and it wasn't making any difference. And that's how the cleanups began, to get support from the community and get volunteers from people. And also, it's a dual element of education. To educate the people about our natural environment, what's right in our, literally my backyard and all of our backyards.
Yes.
It's a great place with all the wildlife and it's just a beautiful place. Last week, my organization got another award from MWRD for volunteering and education, volunteer education.
MWRD is Metropolitan Water Recreation District. They oversee the water issues throughout the whole county. And well, congra, I didn't know that. Congratulations.
For edge of public education.
Well, you've done a phenomenal job. And that's what, that's what makes Elk Grove unique. Just our residents, just like Nick, stepping up in different areas to make a difference. Whether it's decorating for holidays, to bring people together, or Nick making a difference uh, for so many years on an important asset to the village with Salt Creek. You've done a great job.
And it all started here in Elk Grove. And then it spread to the entire creek. So that's my, my, um, and my group, Salt Creek Watershed Network. So we do cleanups all up and down the creek, not just Elk Grove anymore.
Makes sense, because you can't just fix one section. You gotta fix it all. Nick, I cannot thank you enough for your efforts. And what makes me proud is the state recognizes it and it's Elk Grove. It's a win-win.
It's fantastic. Thank you so much. And thank you for your, your speech that you made on the, for our presentation. That was just incredible. It was very nice. Thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
And whoever nominated me, I don't know.
We, it gets done. Don't worry.
I'm so honored. Thank you.
Well, we want to thank you, because little things like that make a difference in a town. And we can't thank you enough, buddy.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hang up. Don't worry, before he goes, we're all putting for you. So... There you go, Nick. That's far of you. Appreciate it. And when, Brian, when we go, you put in the sign up? Tomorrow afternoon, the sign up. So every night, when you come home at night, it gets dark earlier?
My head likes to shine up.
It'll reflect right off of it. You'll know.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you.
Give him another hand. So Jane, why don't your group come on down? Our last presentation tonight. Come on. Mary, whoever else you want to bring. Come on. Come on down.
Hey, you can come too.
Yeah, whoever you want. This is Jane, whoever knows Jane Grega. And we all know Mary's been here many times. They're here to talk about the Elk Grove Cemetery, so.
Yes.
That's a, that may not be good timing tonight after what I said earlier. Well, we're fine. Go ahead.
Well, I'm really here for two reasons. And, uh, the, the first reason is Elk Grove Cemetery and the restoration that's been going on there. But I also want to remind everyone about the Reefs Across America event, Saturday, December thirteenth, at Elk Grove Cemetery at ten AM, where we will be honoring our fallen heroes, veterans, and first responders. And I think, you know, the event is a little unique in that we do honor our first responders as well as our veterans that day. And many of them, of course, served both ways. I think we're ready, and I thank you for your wonderful support.
Well, we're excited. Talk about the cemetery right there at Aronstein Road in the tollway, the Elk Grove Cemetery. That cemetery is very unique. It was founded by the farmers, the original farmers way back when, the Sharonhouses, the Bussys. And when the very first, they set this cemetery. What makes that cemetery unique, especially this year coming up? This year, in twenty-twenty-six, will be the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of this country. Two-hundred-and-fifty years ago, this country is formed. Elk Grove Cemetery is home to the only Revolutionary War veterans buried in all of Cook County. That includes the entire city of Chicago. There's only two Civil War, Revolutionary War veterans buried in all Cook County. Both are at that cemetery. Only documented ones. So it's unique, and that's why the village worked and we raised, not tax, we raised seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to upgrade, fix, modernize that cemetery. And we're very proud. We're gonna rededicate that cemetery on July fourth, twenty-twenty-six, the two-hundred-and-fiftyth anniversary. So it's gonna be a very special day.
Very special.
And you've gone by, you've probably seen it. They, um, we spent our money having tombstones. Many of Mary's, the queen of, she knows, every body in there, every tombstone in there. We found, you wouldn't believe how many tombstones over the years had fallen. Dirt, grass, grow over them. Something we learned. There's two tombstones for a lot of graves. Because what happened was, if the original tombstone fell over a broken half, they just laid it on the ground there and put a new one in. And that's why if you go there and look, you see somebody have two tombstones. They found the old ones, they cleaned them, set them up. A lot of people came and said, "Mayor, what happened to the cemetery? There's so many more people there now." I said, "No, we just found all those tombstones that had been there for a century and a half and gotten forgotten." So they did that. You probably see the brick columns already up. All new fencing coming in, brick columns, new roadway going in, new curbing going in, new lighting going in. A flagpole finally is gonna be at the cemetery. So, and lay it, tuck down some of the old dead trees, overgrown stuff. So it's really gonna be a true historic site, which it is. But it's also gonna be one that's gonna be easily valuable for people to go visit and see the history. Because not just Revolutionary War veterans. There's Civil War veterans there, World War One, World War Two, Vietnam.
Korea.
Korea. You name it, just about every action this country's been involved in, there's people buried there from that time. And you'll see the names. You see Bussy Road, the Bussy families all over there. Landmeyer. Olmsted Park, Olmsted families in there. Um, so it's really Cosman, Cosman Road. You can't miss it. So it's really recognize the history of this area. You know, people think Elk Grove's seventy years old, yes. But there's farmers here for two-hundred years. And those families there. What's the first burial, eighteen?
Eighteen thirty-three.
Eighteen thirty-three, the first grave was buried there from a farmer's family. And, um, so two-hundred years old that place is. And that's the true history of Elk Grove. So if you wanna know where we came from, that's where we came from. Mostly German immigrant farmers that came here and, um, set their roots down and been here. So, just a little history. Go ahead. Now it's back to you.
Well, we love the history. We could talk about that all night. I would, I was thinking the other day. There are people that think we're a little weird because we like cemeteries. And why do we like cemeteries? And I was thinking, I'm the mother of three veterans. They, they all served, they all came home, and I'm proud and thankful for them. One of them joined the Marines. And of my three sons, he was the most enthusiastic, I would say. When he came home from boot camp, all he could talk about was the history he learned. He learned about all the battle histories, the famous battles we've heard about. He could name Marines, you know, they, they had drills where they had to remember all this stuff. Now, why do they do that? It's because that history gives them strength.
To carry on.
Yes. And that's one of the things about the history of ordinary people that I think is so inspirational. So I'm here representing the Eli Skinner chapter of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution. And I brought some friends with me from other lineage societies. And just for those who don't know, we share a common bond in that all of us can prove our lineage to at least one person who's served in the cause of the American Revolution. So I've, like I said, I brought friends. And the first one, Max. So let me make sure I get this right, Max. You can help me. This is Mr. Max Homeyer. We're very proud of this young man. And he is the president of the Illinois Society of the Children of the American Revolution. And he is a past president and member of the Aaron Minor Society. So Max, why don't you share a little bit here?
Talk a little about yourself. What got you involved in this?
Well, it was really my mom who got me involved when I was three years old. And I've been just the president of Aaron Minor a couple times. But then this year, I became the state president. And I have a state project that I go around Illinois presenting about it.
Congratulations. So you study the history of the Revolutionary War and your connection, your heritage, and all that?
Well, yeah, my mom did most of the, she did, she did the, um, the DNA. But I, really, every society meeting, we just talk about events and different things based off the Revolutionary War and the current state project.
Okay, well, congratulations.
Why don't you tell them in a, in two sentences what your state project is?
Uh, well, my state, my state project is for homeless veterans in Illinois. And we are partnering with Veterans Path the Hope, which is a organization in Crystal Lake, which helps to support the homeless veterans in that area and all over Illinois. And I go around Illinois speaking about this project. I sell pins, challenge coins with the logos and everything. And, um, just raise money for the homeless veterans. the homeless veterans.
God, congratulations.
How much you've raised?
I've raised around $11,000.
Oh, my God. That's only the reason. How old are you?
I'm 14 years old.
14 years old. Look what he's doing already, huh? This guy's got a future ahead of him. Thank you. Congratulations. Just don't move to Elk Grove, run for mayor, I'll never beat you. So you're good.
Now, you have something.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would like to present you with a check for $500 on behalf of the Aaron Minor Society for the Elk Grove Cemetery Restoration Project.
Oh, well, thank you, buddy. Nice job. Good job. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. No problem.
Before you go, you get definitely someone. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Good job. Thanks again. Keep up the great work.
And Eric, you want to come forward? So I, we have also someone from the Sons of the American Revolution with us. Eric, will you introduce yourself?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Eric Weiser with the ABC Chapter, American Bicentennial Chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution. We're a chapter right out here in the northwest suburbs. I'm a neighbor of yours in Arlington Heights. And I've driven past this little cemetery for probably 20 years now, not knowing even who was in there. And it was a great surprise about five years ago to learn that you had distinguished veterans there. And Aaron Minor is a, um, is a Revolutionary War veteran. It's very rare to see Cook County mentioned in Revolutionary War pension papers, but if you go search online, ancestry.com, you'll see Cook County in his papers, which is pretty cool. Um, and he served up in Canada, fighting the British up in Canada, terrible weather. Um, yeah, so it's very impressive. So we're very humbled to be here and to contribute to your cemetery restoration project. And we have a check as well for, for $500. Um, it's just a humble gift, just a small gift. And thank you very much. It's one of the things that makes Elk Grove unique, the cemetery.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Wow. I don't mind this meeting. Keep going.
All right, all right. Uh, well, there's several chapters, of course, of all these organizations in the area. And one of them is Barrington. Barrington has the Signal Hill chapter of the DAR. And I have a special guest. Dawn, you want to come forward? So I want to introduce you to Dawn Hedrick. Dawn, you have a couple things to share.
I do. So my fifth great-grandfather is Aaron Minor.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes. So I am very honored that he is here locally. I'm the only one that has a local patriot. And also, I have a check for you from the Signal Hill chapter for $2,200.
Oh, wow.
For the Elk Grove Restoration. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that you can somehow find Hannah Minor. I'm 110% she's there.
You think?
But.
That's Mary's job.
I totally believe her.
Yes.
I've got Cook County court papers, having her here in a, a year before she died. She's buried next to her.
Yeah, but we just.
We got to figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Minor Street in Arlington Heights is also named after him, and so is the Displanes Minor Street.
I never knew that.
Yes. So he's very, um, and his son that he came here with was one of the first doctors in Arlington Heights. And he is buried next to him at Elk Grove Cemetery. So also, I have a son-in-law that was killed in Afghanistan in 2010. So part of that money comes from the funds we raised in his memory.
Well, thank you very much.
So, um, James Stack was killed on the Marine Corps birthday and in 2010. And, um, yeah, so his daughter just turned 16, so we lost him 15 years ago. And he was 20 years old. So, um, he's buried in Arlington Heights.
And a proud new father, too.
Yes.
She was just nine-one.
She just started walking before he got deployed out, so.
Our prayers with him.
Thank you. And my daughter now works at Christian Liberty in Arlington Heights, where they met. They met in school there, so. But thank you for restoring the cemetery. It looks absolutely amazing.
Thank you.
And very white. They have cleaned and cleaned and cleaned because you couldn't read it.
You'd never know those.
No, you wouldn't never know. But thank you for honoring Aaron, and hopefully someday we'll, we'll all get to.
Every Mary's job to fund it.
Yes.
She'll do it.
And 15 years ago, I overcame stage four cancer, so I'm still here. So good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Well, now it's my turn. So the Eli Skinner chapter of the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution, I'm, I'm presenting on their behalf. And I have a check for you for $3,500 for the restoration fund. We're so thankful.
Thank you.
And now just one more from Mary.
I just don't know, Mary, how this all started was, you know, people say, well, Mayor, you got graves there. I bought my graves years ago there, nothing like that. But Mary and Jane came to a board meeting and talked about the history behind the cemetery. Now, when I bought mine there, it really was a compromise between my wife and I. Her family's all buried at St. Michael's in Palatine. My family's all buried at Memorial Park in Skokie, because my dad's family was all Chicago people. So we could never figure out where we're going to be buried. So I said one day, let's just split the difference. Let's go to the Elk Grove Cemetery that's in between. And I didn't realize they had so many graves available, plus the price was right. Back then, it was $1,000 a grave. Now it's a whopping $1,100, which is unbelievable. So that's how it all happened. So anyways, I used to be a history teacher. I taught at Wheeling High School. That's my original job out of college, I was a history teacher. So, and my area of expertise was the Civil War. Big fan, big on that. So they came to talk about that cemetery. And the more they talked about it, the more Mary talked about what's buried there, who's buried there, and all that, it just got my history side of my body going, that that's how I started to get more interested in it. And that's when, about a year, year and a half ago, decided, we got to fix this place up. And that's how it all came about. But it's because of this lady's history knowledge of that cemetery is what got this whole restoration project going. And the board, we talked, and we said, well, we're not going to have the taxpayers. We're going to reach out to the people in this community to step up, like today, and thank you all very much. And we went to the business rest, and that's how we're getting the money to restore it. Because Elk Grove should be proud of the history that's there. That doesn't exist. Like I say, in all Cook counties, it exists nowhere. We're the only one. So, so Mary is the one that's really got this all going. Jane's been the inspiration. Mary's the knowledge. Trust me. We talked on the phone a couple weeks ago for like three hours. She knew every grave. Because the people that restored the tombstones took a picture of every single tombstone, and it has a history behind it, a before and after picture. And we're going through that. I didn't barely say anything. Mary's reading off the whole thing. I said, what are you doing? She goes, I know that. I know that one. I know that one. I know that one. So all yours, Mary.
All mine. Okay. Well, we, we started the ball running on this with, actually, it was Rees Across America that started us up. The cemetery originally said, oh, we've got seven veterans buried there. And I said, nah. And we're going to, we're up to 36 veterans right now, and one true son, one true daughter, which means that they're a son or a daughter of a Revolutionary War patriot. So those will be the ones that will be getting the, um, the Rees, at Rees Across America. We started the ball running, but you picked it up and ran with it in an incredible way. Um, I don't know who had more fun this summer, him or me, because every time we went into that cemetery, we came out with a big grin on our face. Because what was just a bunch of broken stones lying on the ground is all of a sudden standing up, visible history of this area. The, um, the daughter, the son of the, of, um, Aaron Minor, Frederick Minor, the doctor, he is the one that donated that one little acre of land, and to the amount of history that's sitting in that one little acre, absolutely incredible. And one of the things I told the mayor about is that one of the first things when Stonehuggers, which is the organization that, that did the restoration for us, when they went in there, the first week, they called me up and they said, we got a headstone. We have absolutely no idea where this thing's supposed to go. Come on and have a look at it. So I go in and look at it, and the two patriots are Eli Skinner and Aaron Minor. And the stone was for Laban Minor. And I looked at it, and I said, where'd you find that? And they said, well, right over there, and pretty much near to Eli Skinner. I said, well, that's Eli Skinner's grandson. And we had absolutely no idea that he was even buried here. So not only is history being, um, not only is the cemetery being restored, but history is being restored too. And the Daughters of the American Revolution are so appreciative, and quite honestly, all the organizations here, of the work that you have done on getting that cemetery put back together, something that is going to be an absolute showcase for the village and for the county. We would like to present you with an award for excellence in historic preservation from the Daughters of the American Revolution. And it even comes with a medal.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You have gone far beyond what we ever expected anyone to do to get that cemetery back going. And I, I, I walk out of the place with a grin on my face every time I go in. I was there again yesterday taking more pictures.
Well, thank you. Um, again, I was born and raised here. My family was a 300th family to move in. My parents, Briarwood Lane, the first section, moved in. I was born and raised here. My wife was born and raised here. All my kids were born and raised here. Three of them still live in Elk Grove. The one that doesn't, we don't talk to anymore. My 10 grandkids, seven of them live here in the village. We're hoping to get my daughter back, though. But, I mean, this is my home. This is, like I say, I was born, raised. Hopefully, it's a ways off, but when I die, I'll be buried, I'll be in Elk Grove forever. So it means a lot. And being a history major, when I saw that stuff, I couldn't help but want to take off with it and run with it, because people don't realize, that's what made this country.
Yeah.
Is those farmers from 200 years ago, who all they did was work to till the land, to raise their family, and to make a living to keep going. And to have that kind of history in Elk Grove Village is impossible. I mean, and so, and it's amazing. I mean, we got the toll, anyone drove by there, saw the new hay and the new hill the tollway did next to it? And the tollway spent hundreds of thousands of dollars fixing it up for us at their expense to make it work. No one has said no when I asked for help on this project. Because the history behind, I mean, think about it. Even the city of Chicago does not have one.
Nope.
We have two.
Yeah.
I mean, and to have that, it's just, you know, drive by since I was a little kid sitting in the car and seeing the name Cosman on that one cemetery by the fence, no one, oh, I remember that's my dad. What's, that's Cosman Road. That's the Cosman. I mean, the history there is just ingrained in you. So you're the ones keeping it alive, and I can't thank, I'm just a little help to you.
Oh, you're a lot of help.
I appreciate that.
We could have never done this without your help.
Well, we're going to have a big dedication July 4th.
I'll be there.
We got letters into Washington to get some recognition and stuff like that. So we're going to have a special day remembering the history of this village and this area. And it's the area, Arlington Heights, all, all together, but we're excited about it, and I can't thank you enough. And that's an honor I can't believe. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Before you go. Jane. Now, I choose very grateful tonight. I'm all gone. That's all the chocolate for tonight. We're good. And thank you again. Give him a big hand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Incredible.
Folks, if you're, if you want to go ahead and get going, by all means. I know it's a school night and other things going on. Thank you. We got to keep these, so I make sure on the plates, I get the names right. Okay, so I'll scan it. Yeah, it's four, seven, eight, nine, ten. Michael, you doing good?
Nice job. It was pretty cold. Nice job.
Yeah, that was, what happened?
Dr.
Oh, you got it, okay. Okay, is they get going there? Hang on. We'll get started with the trustee. Sorry, trustee Frankie. Yeah, it was longer than I thought, dude. I apologize.
Trustee Miller.
Well, you got to get it out quickly.
Some of her report was given away already.
Trustee Frankie said that was interesting.
Okay, we'll run out trustee's report. Trustee Jeffrey Bush.
What?
Joe Bush, sorry.
Esca, Esca down there.
Go ahead, Joe Bush.
I would be blessed if Jeffrey was my father. That'd be, be an honor.
Father, grandfather?
Maybe grandfather.
Is this an age thing?
No, no. Older brother, older brother, Jeff. Elk Grove High School had a Veterans Day Assembly on the 7th of November, and I just wanted to thank Officer Leone and Officer Muscato, who are keynote speakers, which are both members of the Police Department here at Elk Grove High School. We also had some firefighters who are, uh, served in the military come out. It was a beautiful day. Trustee Jerish was there for the breakfast, and we had a good time. So, uh, thank you for your continued support of that and for the police officers and firefighters that came out. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Miller, that one I got right.
Thank you. So I was happy to attend the 55th birthday of Rotary of Elk Grove, and they had an open house. It was really a nice event, and along with trustee Schmidt and trustee Jerish and trustee Laskin. So we had a good time, but happy birthday to Elk Grove Rotary. Also, the Community Character Coalition, as well as the village, the library, and the pavilion, and Al Hatendorf Center are still collecting Toys for Tots. Um, the, I think the last day is the 11th of December, and please make sure that they are unwrapped and new. Um, last year, we had a record number of toys, and so we want to try to continue that record. Um, there's boxes out in the lobby of the Village Hall, so please, if you have a chance to pick up a toy, a Toy for Tots, this is actually sponsored by the U.S. Marine Corps. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Now trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
You're the right guy.[1623.75]
You got the right guy.
No report.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes, I'd like to report that, uh, this Thursday, we are gonna have fifteen students from our sister city coming here for our fifteenth student exchange with Elk Grove High School. We want to thank the Elk Grove High School, uh, Principal Kelly and the, uh, foreign language teachers for their cooperation. We're looking forward to it, and we will be bringing the fifteen students and their, uh, hosts from Elk Grove High School to the tree lighting ceremony on the day after Thanksgiving. So we will be there. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Jerish.
Um, yeah, just to reiterate several of the things, um, I'll be quick. Uh, Interfaith Council Thanksgiving Service is this coming Monday at seven P.M. It's open to the entire community. It is going to be held at Christus Bigder Lutheran Church on Arlington Heights Road, just south of, um, Beasterfield. Uh, so please come. It, it's a wonderful event. And I want to congratulate trustee Bush and really the entire students' body of, uh, Elk Grove High School for the Veterans Day event. Um, what was really unique about that day is, um, the assembly. Uh, all the students were challenged to turn off their phones and put them away. And I think that was very successful. Ah, okay. And, um, it was just going to that event and seeing young people today respecting and honoring our veterans. Um, it's just an amazing event. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Jerish. Trustee Laskin.
Uh, thank you. Actually, I want to add a little bit about the, uh, grave site that you're talking about. Uh, one thing I want to mention to everybody is findagrave.com. That's the website that they kind of showed me where you could learn the history of, just search for the Elk Grove Cemetery. They have an app, or you can just go online, findagrave.com. And when you click on each of the names, um, you know, you can get more. They took pictures of the gravestones and has more of the history behind the person, um, and the lineage, of course. So it's really amazing website that they actually kind of, uh, added all the content to. Um, last thing I want to mention is Wednesday, uh, I went to a ribbon cutting with, with trustee, uh, Jerish and who else? Was this us two?
Um, yes, Sudie's, our business development.
And Sudie, I'm sorry, Sudie's was also there as well. I was thinking, I was thinking about different trustees. Um, but we went to a ribbon cutting, uh, called Toradento. Uh, it is a dojo, and they do, uh, Shoto Ken Karate, Okinawa Kobudu, and Krav Maga. Um, hopefully, I pronounced all those correctly. Exactly. Uh, but yeah, they're on the corner of, uh, Meacham and Beasterfield, right around the corner of where the, uh, Great American Bagel is. Amazing place. Uh, Amy was a phenomenal host showing us, uh, everything, uh, taught us about the history. Torah meaning tiger, dental meaning the knowledge and the tradition, so perfect name, uh, Toradento. They do all ages, from four years old all the way up, uh, adults. They encourage, you know, we always think about kids. They have great programs for kids, but they have phenomenal programs as well for adults. So again, that's, uh, Toradento. I really appreciate their hospitality to invite us to that ribbon cutting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Laskin. Accounts payable warrant with our first one is for October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. This is Mr. Delgado's first check. Go ahead.
I make a motion, we pay the accounts payable warrant for October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five for nine million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and five cents.
Uh, which is true, the five cents, Mr. Delgado's first paycheck's on there.
I knew that was.
So we're good. Uh, do I, second?
Second.
A motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Bush. Gin, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Bush?
Aye.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Jerish?
Aye.
Trustee Laskin?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye. Motion passed six nothing. We have, uh, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-six?
I make a motion, we pay the accounts payable warrant for November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Shouldn't it be?
Mine says twenty twenty-six.
It does, but shouldn't it be twenty twenty-five?
Yes, it should.
Uh-huh. My bad.
Look at me catching this.
Okay, very good.
Uh, okay, I'll start over again. I make a motion, we pay the accounts payable warrant for November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five for four hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ten cents.
Second? We have a motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Bush, and without objection, record the votes, please demonstrate it, six to nothing. Tonight, we have consent agenda items, A is in Albuquerque through R is in Roadrunner. Um, any ques, uh, first, I need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion by trustee Bush, second by trustee Miller. Any questions, comments, concerns from board members of staff on consent agenda? Anybody in the audience on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, hearing none, and without objection, record the votes, please demonstrate it, six to nothing. We now move on to regular agenda. We have no items. Plan Commission, Mr. Matthew Roan.
Uh, we have three items tonight. Um, on November third, the Plan Commission met to hear PC dock at twenty-five dash seven to consider the petition for special use for food processing for a property located at twenty-two hundred Elmhurst Road. It was the consensus of the Plan Commission by a seven oh vote to approve the petition, uh, for special use for food processing.
Is the petitioner here tonight? Okay. Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, hearing none. Um, I need a motion to have attorney prepare necessary documents.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion by trustee Jerish, second by trustee Miller. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the direction ask approval. You're all set, sir. Uh, you do not need to come back in two, or actually, be a month. You don't need to come back in a month. It'll be on, um, on the consent agenda, mere formality. Does Plan Commission pass unanimously? We just did tonight. You're good to go. We want to thank you for working with Elk Grove. We want to thank you for working through the process with our commission, and we wish you nothing but the best of luck. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Roan?
Also, on November third, the Plan Commission met to hear PC docket twenty-five dash eight to consider the petition for special use for an electrical substation for property located at one oh one Northwest Point Boulevard. It was the consensus of the Plan Commission by a seven oh vote to approve the petition, uh, for special use and associated variations.
Okay. I know the petitioners are here tonight. Um, uh, any questions, common concerns from the village board? I need a motion to direct attorney, prepare necessary documents.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion by trustee Laskin, second by trustee Bush. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's, let's show an ass approval. We want to thank you. You worked well with us. You also worked well with your neighbors, um, on making sure that as minimal impact as possible on the community and on them. And we appreciate the work and investment you're making in the village. Big money investment. We can't thank you enough. So thank you for that. You, again, you don't have to come back in four weeks. It'll be a mere formality. You're good to go, and I thank you again. Okay. Last but not least.
And finally, on November third, Plan Commission met to hear PC dock at twenty-five dash nine to consider a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, section three dash three dash B, uh, fence standards permitted in residential districts by adjusting the height of the fence from six feet to eight feet for properties adjacent to highways. Um, it was the consensus of the Plan Commission by a seven oh vote to approve the text amendment to the zoning ordinance.
So there's no one here for that?
Just us.
Yeah. So what that's saying, folks, anyone watching, is if you back up any kind of highway in Elk Grove, you can have an eight-foot fence without a special permission. Uh, with highways there, helps cut down the noise, impact on quality of life and all that. So anyone that does that, you have our permission in the future to do that. That bill is long overdue.
Can we clarify that, um, that it's only on the portion that backs up to the highway, not your whole fence in your whole backyard, correct?
Right, it's just that, yeah. It's not the sides going up or anything.
So just the portion that's up against the highway?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I need a motion. Have attorney prepare necessary documents.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion by trustee, uh, Schmidt, second by trustee Miller. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's, let's show an ass approval. Very good. Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Roan?
No items.
Okay. Recycling and Waste Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
Yes, uh, the Recycling and Waste Committee had a meeting today to consider, yes, I know, it was crazy. Uh, we covered our Sustainability Action Plan, uh, for the village of, uh, future things we want to do to try to, um, save the environment, uh, do whatever we can to, uh, make things cleaner for the village and that. So we have a, a new program. Uh, we're gonna start to put together and get it ready for the summer. So when we have more concrete information, we'll start that. But we're gonna, looking to, uh, approve our action plan by, uh, the summer, correct? Um, so it was a very good meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. One more thing. Um, just so people know, our last, uh, pickup for yard waste and that will be the week of December fifteenth. So people.
Now, that's the bags.
Bags or the, um, branches or grass, yeah.
Right. But the ones you give out normally, you put a sticker on?
Right.
Okay. What about leaf pickup? Are we gonna do an extra one after Thanksgiving?
You say to go.
Huh?
If you say yes, we're in.
We all say yes.
We'll do it.
Okay, so just so everyone knows, normally, our last pickup will be next week, the week of Thanksgiving. Thank God, 'cause you had a pickup. This is the first weekend, first Monday, I put leaves out all year, and I put a ton out. You guys had to go back and forth three times to get them all. So you had to get a ton of leaves this week, aren't you?
It's a lot.
Yeah, 'cause it, leaves have fallen late. So anyone listening, we'll make sure to put on our website that next week is a normal pickup, except if you're Thursday, Friday, you moved up a day or two. And then the week after, sometime during that week, it may not be your normal day, but sometime during that week, we will pick up. So have your leaves out by five A.M. or seven A.M. on Monday, the week after Thanksgiving. And something, might be Tuesday, might be Friday, might be Monday, you have a pickup. Am I right? We're good?
Do we have the dumpsters still in?
Yeah, the dumpsters will be out, I think, for the rest of the month.
Where are they at?
Fleet Garage on Beasterfield.
Yep.
And then at Public Works on Devon.
Over on Devon.
Yep.
So now, is the end of this month, or I thought you usually put out into December, I think?
I can check, but I thought it's the end of the month. We can figure that out.
Okay, let us know. But definitely an extra leaf pickup this year. Thank you.
But also, if I can make a statement also, folks, stop throwing your garbage in there. I, I, I don't understand why some people can do this, but it's for leaves only. They're, they're bringing
Yes.
bicycles, garbage, all that. It's, it's just laziness. And, uh, we have to go through the whole thing then and sort it out. So it's for leaves only and not in plastic bags. Just dump your leaves in there or put them in the paper bags. So, um, we're putting it there for convenience, but if it's gonna keep being at a point where it's gonna cost us so much time to go through it, we're gonna stop doing it. So please, keep it clean.
That's.
December twelfth? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Judiciary Planning Zoning Committee, trustee Bush.
No report.
Capital Improvement Committee, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
Capital Television Committee, trustee Laskin.
No report.
Youth Committee, trustee Bush.
No report.
Information Committee, we're gonna skip. We move on now to, uh...
You always gotta ruin it, don't you?
I know.
Information Committee, trustee Miller.
It's really quick, and it ties into, um, what we were saying about the Lions, uh, Club and Leo Club, um, doing the decorate, house decorating contest. You have to have your entries received by Saturday, December sixth, if you want your house to be judged. That concludes my report.
And they'll start December thirteenth. She said judging.
Yes, but your entry has to be in a week ahead.
So they know how to set the route.
That is correct.
Very good. Uh, Business Leaders Forum, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
Health and Community Services, trustee Jerish.
Quick reminder that Saturday, December thirteenth, here at the village, will be our last blood drive for the year. Um, it's from eight to one in Meeting Room E. And you can sign up online, www dot bike to link dot org, or you can just show up. Thanks, and that's my report.
Thank you. First now, Committee, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
Um, Airport Update, no report. Parade Committee, we don't meet until April. Midsummer Concert Classic Series, yes, we don't have a lineup yet. Um, Jon Bon Jovi's set, YouTube's set, Paul McCartney's set, but we're not, no, I'm joking. No, that didn't happen. Our hope is, for December meeting, we will have our summer concert lineup for our seventieth anniversary. We're excited. We're looking forward to it. So stay tuned to December sixteenth. Uh, bear with me a second. Special Events Committee is obviously a tree lighting a week from Friday, the twenty-eighth. Be there at four o'clock for storytime, four thirty for the box tops, four to five thirty, uh, little train rides, um, hot chocolate, cider, cookies, candy cane, Santa, race car, fireworks. You name it, it's gonna be happening that day. So keep your fingers crossed for good weather and look forward to it. No Liquor Commission meeting. Report from our village manager.
No report.
From our village clerk.
No report.
Any unfinished business under attorney? Yeah, as usual, there's nothing there. Uh, any new business items from board members before we go to the public? Seeing none, hearing none? Okay, um, I know Julie's here to, which should address the board. And I think there's another gentleman on the same topic, uh, Mr. Tully from Carroll Street. You guys want to come together, Julie, or separate, or? Separate?
Hi. Mayor and the board. My name is Julie Mortensen. Can everyone hear me?
I pushed the button.
That one?
Yeah.
We're good? Okay. Um, hearing impaired person should know better. Um, my name is Julie Mortensen. I'm a resident of Elk Grove Village for fifty-two years. I emailed all the board members and the mayor. Um, I just don't understand why Elk Grove Village would not pass a welcoming ordinance. Uh, we have an exceptional village, but we are not welcoming all. I think all residents should be welcomed and not afraid to go out in their community. We need to know that our citizens will be protected, including myself, against ICE agents. I'm seventy-two years old. I do a lot of protesting. I protest 'cause it's my right. And if an ICE agent came up to me, would my, would our police department protect me against somebody throwing me on the ground? I don't get a straight answer from anybody. I've, I've, and as, as far as ICE agents in Elk Grove Village, there were ICE agents in Elk Grove Village. I was holding a rally, and Commissioner Kevin Morrison came over. Twenty people had been picked up. And they did not have visas, their work visas on them. They had their work visas at home. And the owner of the store kept telling them, they are all legally registered to work here. They all had visas. And the last time I talked to Commissioner Morrison, there was only one person they knew where they were. The rest, they had no idea. The Federal Appeals Court in Chicago already ruled such ordinances and policies are constitutional under the Ninth and Tenth Amendment. The Trump administration may threaten our local government, but they, we don't have to cooperate with them. With ICE against our own citizens. Why wouldn't we want to pass this anyways? We are a diverse community. People should feel welcome and not afraid. Every resident of Elk Grove Village should know their village works for them, not as an arm of these civil ICE operate, organizations or operations. That's how you build trust, solve crimes, and keep families engaged with schools, clinics, and local government. The Attorney General, the trust act, protect local and state law enforcement from arresting someone solely on the basis of retainer. A request from ICE that police hold a person for up to twenty, forty-eight hours so federal agents can pick them up. The Way Forward Act, which became law in Illinois in August twenty twenty-one, amends two existing state laws to add additional requirements and protections for immigrant community. We urge the village to proactively adopt a welcoming ordinance, a municipal policy affirming that all residents regarding a background or immigration status are valued community members, and that local resources will not be used for civil immigration enforcement beyond what federal and state law requires. The rationale behind this, excuse me, is public safety, efficiency, legal alignment, and community, community cohesion. The appellate court reaffirms that local communities get to decide the best strategies for promoting public safety without being coerced into fulfilling this administration's immoral immigration agenda. Our communities are safer when everybody feels that they can go out into the, and they can go and help, get help from the police departments, rather than fear that any interaction with the police will result in deportation or family separation. The Ninth Amendment offers a constitutional safety net intended to make it clear that Americans have other fundamental rights beyond those listed in the Bill of Rights. The Tenth Amendment was included in the Bill of Rights to preserve the balance of power between the federal government and the states. So I do not know why Elk Grove Village would not want to put up a, a welcoming ordinance for everybody.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tully, did you want to address those two? Your name and address for the record, please?
Of course. Is the, uh, can you hear me?
Pardon?
I hear, will you hear me?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. We're used to all me being short people, so you, sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and Board, my name is Dan Tully. My address is six oh eight Red Hill Trail, two A, Carroll Street, Illinois. I wanted to come past here and, and visit you today because, uh, it's a very similar topic to which you spoke. I, in my previous work as an attorney, I've helped Venezuelan migrants apply for temporary protected status and work authorization permits. And now, in my current work, I do a lot of door knocking and phone calling to folks who live in this area, specifically in this community. And I wanted to share with you what I've been hearing from folks. And if you don't believe me, please sample yourself by, by reaching out to some of the, the, the voters in this district. People are afraid, and of course, there's a lot of reason to be afraid for, for the immigrant community. In addition to that, though, people of all, all across your, your community are afraid. That's because of a Supreme Court decision that in effect says that ICE can stop people based on the color of their skin, based on the accent with which they speak English, and based on the language that they speak. Those are legal bases under the Supreme Court to stop people. And so there's, there's this kind of fear in this village, and people are wondering what to do. Julie's protests. There are other protesters that even go down to Broadview. Some people are even willing to break the law in acts of civil disobedience to stand in front of ICE vehicles with their hands out. Local governments can take action. Right now, in this climate, when the federal government can't be relied upon to actually act in the, in the best interest of the American people, we look to the local levels of government. Already, Cook County, DuPage County, King County, counties all across this state have taken action. And municipalities, villages, and cities have also taken action. Peer villages to this one have taken action. Some of the more, uh, assertive ones have taken, uh, passed ordinances to say ICE can't use village or city property to conduct operations. Uh, the, the more cautious ones have passed resolutions. Uh, either way, I would encourage you to, to take a listen and to sample from your own constituents. Hear the fear that they're feeling. People are afraid of being stopped, even having to... People are afraid of being stopped, even having to take their U.S. passports around to show that they can legally be here. So, all that to say, you truly are an exceptional community. To sit through this meeting and hear one of all the great things that are going on in this community, I think that you all truly care about your constituents. Please, sample and hear what the fears are and consider taking action so that you don't become exceptional for the reason of not standing up for your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Does anybody else wish to address the board this evening? Helen, you doing okay? Okay. Our prayers are with you during this holiday season. Okay. We appreciate information. We're going to take it under advisement. We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Anything else from any board members? If not, I need a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second?
We have a motion by Trustee Miller, second by Trustee Laskin. Folks, have a great Thanksgiving. Enjoy the holidays. See you at the tree lighting. We'll see you one more time before the holidays meeting. Oh, wait, call the roll. I even did that before I saw your handout.
I was, Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Bush?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Laskin?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Jerish?
Aye.
Motion passes six nothing. Meeting adjourned.
In our town of Cranford, New Jersey, our local municipal channel, TV 35, is a major source of hyper-local information that is specifically designed and created for our residents alone. We get to see our town meetings, concerts, high school sports, news, and more on a channel that is strictly about our community. The value of public, educational, and government stations was clearly demonstrated during the COVID-19 pandemic. All-access channels provided crucial information, including press conferences and emergency updates from their municipal governments directly to their citizens. Today, the very existence of PEG channels is under attack. Access channels have been historically supported by a special surcharge that subscribers pay on their monthly cable bill,